Good evening colleagues, please be seated. I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting of Newcastle City Council. As you believe you'll be aware, standalone microphones will again be used at this meeting and for all future meetings. So can I ask that members move to the microphones at the appropriate time? And please do not speak from your seats as you cannot then be heard. Now as members are also aware, tonight we'll be using the new mobile voting system again for all votes. So before we start this meeting, we're now going to do a test vote of the e-voting system to ensure, yes we are, to ensure that all members are fully registered and set up to participate in voting if required later in the meeting. So can I ask that members now access their devices and submit a response to the test vote and let us know if you are not being registered. There are a number of staff from the digital team in the chamber, so raise your hand if you need help. Are we all right? Okay, that seems to be okay, nobody's got their hands up. Wendy, councillor Taylor has her hand up. Are we okay then? Yeah, right. So are there any apologies?
Thank you Lord Mayor. We've had apologies from councillors Beecham, Cot, Davison, Lawson, Morrissey, Shorten, Stokelwater, Stokelwalker, David Wood, Margaret Wood.
Thank you. I wonder where councillor Beecham is? Oh he's... Councillor Allison is here. Does council agree the minutes of the meeting held on the 28th of June? Agreed? Yep, fine. On behalf of council, can I express our horror and shock at the fatal stabbing of Peter Duncan in Old Eldon Square in broad daylight on the 14th of August? Everyone in the city was shocked and deeply saddened to hear about the circumstances of Mr Duncan's death. I would like to offer council's deepest sympathies and condolences to the family and friends of Mr Duncan. On behalf of council, I want to pay tribute to and recognise the wonderful staff who delivered the best summer ever programme. Staff from City Council and the charity Street Games came together in May to develop the project. Their hard work, passion and enthusiasm has meant 6,000 individual young people have attended one or more of the 130 projects in their local area throughout the six weeks of the summer holidays, each of them receiving access to healthy food and physical and cultural activity. The team especially need to be recognised for making this programme so successful in the smallest possible time, only eight weeks from start to the first week of the school holidays, so well done to them all. Now members will have seen an emergency notice of motion on prorogation of Parliament in the items circulated at meeting on your seats this evening. It's suggested that this matter be dealt with as a matter of urgency due to concerns around the current political uncertainty at national level, and it's proposed that we deal with the emergency notice of motion as the next item of business. If this notice of motion is to be dealt with tonight, it will be necessary to suspend standing order 14 which relates to the time period for bringing in a notice of motion. So is it agreed to suspend standing order 14? Agreed, right. I'll therefore call on councillor Forbes to move the motion, seconded by councillor McCarthy.
Thank you Lord Mayor, thank you colleagues for agreeing to take this important notice of motion this evening. And I'm pleased that despite the very short notice that we've had to put this together, that I understand it's going to be seconded by the opposition, which I think will show the strength of support in the council chamber tonight. Since the prorogation of Parliament was announced last week, there's been widespread condemnation across the political spectrum at one of the longest prorogations in history. To put this into context, in 2010, prorogation was three days, 2012, seven days, 2013, 12 days, 2014, 20 days although that did include the Whitson holiday, 2015, three days, 2016, one of five days and one of six days. So a prorogation of five weeks is probably one of the longest periods of prorogation in the last 40 years. And prorogation is one of those arcane bits of our unwritten constitution. And when I refer to our constitution, what I really mean is the ragbag and hotpot of conventions and procedures that rely upon dignity, self-regulation, convention and honour to enact. Clearly these values are in short supply in the current government. It's not unusual for prorogations to take place through the royal prerogative, but the nature and timing of this one, being used as a political weapon, most certainly is not only unusual but in my view utterly inappropriate. Many of us have long argued for a written constitution, and this whole episode has demonstrated the fragility of our current constitutional agreement, based on conventions and historic gentleman's agreements. This makes it deeply vulnerable to rogues who don't share traditional British values of natural justice and fair play. And our worries were compounded over the weekend by the refusal of the Secretary of State for the Cabinet Office to confirm that this government would recommend a bill passed in both Houses of Parliament to the Queen for royal assent. Another arcane bit of our constitution which is being abused or we have the threat of it being abused by the current government. No wonder a former Conservative Cabinet Minister and former Conservative leadership candidate said on the radio this morning that our democracy is being challenged. I would argue it's more than being challenged, it's under direct attack and assault. Not only has the government closed down Parliament, or will close down Parliament next week to avoid challenge and scrutiny, they're busy expelling anyone from their party who voted against them last night and getting rid of the dissenting voices. This is more reminiscent of the oppressive regimes around the world like Russia or Venezuela or Iran, and it undermines Britain's moral authority as a country to speak out against them. And ultimately, I believe it's a sign of great political weakness, not political strength, by a Prime Minister who's desperately trying to present himself as the new strong man of British politics and instead is coming across as a hopeless, helpless pantomime clown. One of the saddest things that really concerns me is that a sizable chunk of our country's population think that Parliament is irrelevant, or worse, a barrier to implementing the referendum result. And we've had decades of a national narrative lampooning our Members of Parliament, devaluing and debasing their role. The expenses scandal didn't help, but trying to frame Parliament as the enemy of the people, which is what this current government is trying to do, is in my view a very dangerous and seditious move. At a time of national crisis, and there is no doubt we are facing a national crisis, our Parliament should be front and centre of our national debate. Instead, it will be silenced, the lights will go out, and as they do, the beacon of representative democracy that Britain has represented to the world for decades will be diminished. It was Winston Churchill, ironically, whose grandson is one of the people expelled from the Conservative Party yesterday, who said, "Democracy is the worst form of government, except for all of those other forms that have been tried from time to time." I believe that democracy is now under threat in this country, and as democrats to our core, we must defend it with all our might. So I would urge council to agree this emergency resolution this evening. Thank you.
I understand this motion is actually going to be seconded by councillor Ferguson. I have a number of speakers indicated, councillor Taylor to be followed by councillor Todd.
Thank you Lord Mayor. I think all of us here agree totally with this motion. It's an utter disgrace that our new Prime Minister's action is to baroque Parliament. It really is a serious attack on democracy and it is totally unacceptable. And the excuses being peddled by the government are unbelievable, and it's very sad that some people seem to believe them, that it's all part of the normal process of government, that it's just to allow the new Queen's Speech because we haven't had one for a while. But it's not an attack on democracy, because Parliament's had plenty of time to debate these issues and it's time we just got on with things. It's all utter nonsense. This is close to dictatorship. And what is utterly sickening is Boris suggesting that he is supporting the people versus some supposed political elite. The very idea that Boris Johnson and Jacob Rees-Mogg are not part of an elite is frankly laughable. I would like to commend the 21 Tory MPs who took a very brave decision last night. It's not easy to turn away from a party you've been a member of for so many years, but these brave people have put their country before their party, before their career and before their livelihoods, and we should applaud that. We don't agree with their politics on many issues, but on this occasion they've made a very brave stand, and it's a disgrace that the whip has been taken away from them and they're being threatened with being taken away from the Tory party. This will leave the Tory party as a really nasty right-wing elite that none of us could ever support. However, we must work cross-party if we're going to tackle this issue. And I was very disappointed with the rally on Saturday at the monument where nearly 2,000 people came to object to proroguing Parliament, and yet it was run by a very narrow elite of people who actually refused to have a Liberal Democrat Speaker at that rally. It's not going to work, we're not going to tackle this attack on our democracy if we don't all work together, so we need the Labour Party, the Green Party, Plaid Cymru, SNP and the Liberal Democrats to do everything possible to stop this attack on our democracy and to get on and allow Parliament to do the job it's elected to do. Thank you.
Councillor Todd to be followed by councillor King.
Thank you Lord Mayor. I was thinking the other day that we're coming up to a bicentennial in Newcastle. Yes, a bicentennial of Newcastle's response to the Peterloo massacre in 1819. So on the 11th of October 1819, a vast number of people from Newcastle and surrounding towns assembled, first of all they tried to assemble round the corner in the Haymarket, but there were too many of them to be accommodated, 76,000 people eventually. It took one and a half hours for them to cross Barris Bridge, as it then was, to get onto the town hall to hold a protest in solidarity with the people who had been killed and protested for an extension of the suffrage in Manchester, and were cut down by the Yeomanry Cavalry and other units of the army that the government conspired to be present. 76,000 people, according to the census figures of the time, that was almost 20% of the entire population of Northumberland and Durham as it then was. So where we're standing tonight is on foundations that those people, those generations created, and certainly from Peterloo, they built partly with their own lives and at risk of their lives and imprisonment and all those other things. Parliamentary democracy in Britain wasn't given to us, it had to be struggled for, fought for and carved out by the protests and the campaigns of the people over a very long time and a bitter series of struggles. So how is it we got to the position where a small tiny clique have managed to take over the Conservative Party and turn it into something else and expel from the party, their party in Parliament, people who were pillars of that party for 40 or 50 years? This is not the Conservative Party, this is a different kind of party that's emerging. It's something more in common with right-wing European populist parties. So we need to start thinking about, we're up against something very different, very dark and very evil. In some ways, we can beat them a bit by humour, as well as the serious things that we do, such as the protests in Newcastle on Saturday, which I was very proud to support. I'm sorry councillor Taylor has entered a kind of note of disunity into all of that, perhaps they should have asked from Liberal Democrats for the organisers to give them a slot on the platform, though one of the organisers did say to me that it was probably in the Lib Dem's best interest not to be on the platform, because there were people in that crowd who would have called them to account for propping up a Tory government. But let's try and pull this back to some kind of unity. And what we have to do is stand united in defence of the sovereignty of Parliament against this government. I don't think we're a completely democratic state, but we can build on it with all of that. And lastly, just coming back to the way you use humour, just very finally, it's often described, was described sometimes on Saturdays as a coup d'etat. Actually, I think it's a coup de twat, we need to get rid of the twat.
Thank you. Councillor King to be followed by councillor Avery.
Thank you Lord Mayor. This is a libertarian coup, and I refuse to be treated like a dog. Prime Minister Johnson has used extraordinary executive powers to suspend our legislature. The first step of Augusto Pinochet in Chile was to suspend the legislature. Prime Minister Johnson is scared of Parliament and frightened of democracy. What do these libertarians want? The answer is power and money in fewer hands. They have come for our peace, our bread and our health. The European Union has been the guarantor of peace within Europe for 50 years, and war profiteering will start with renewed conflict in Northern Ireland because Prime Minister Johnson's contempt for the Good Friday Agreement. We currently have trust in our food because of the high standards of our producers, regulated by the EU and our own government. Within the single market to sell our produce, without the single market to sell our produce into, our farmers will cry out. It will be necessary to cut costs, and the libertarians will step in to cut regulations, slashing the bonds of trust we have with our food and lowering the bar to allow American imports for their big business, American paymasters. In a future trade deal with America, the US ambassador has said that the NHS would be on the menu. Donald Trump has confirmed this. At 16, I had my right hand reconstructed by the NHS after an accident. I know that without this, I would not be standing in front of you as a doctor. I have two young children born in the NHS. ESPN, the American sports publisher, recently interviewed UFC competitor Jordan Williams. Williams was grateful to have found that he could purchase dog insulin at Walmart to treat his type 1 diabetes. I refuse to build a future where my children would be treated like a dog. When I have talked about Brexit with my European colleagues, I initially see fear in their eyes. When I tell them I will fight with others to stop Brexit, they have tears in their eyes. When I look into my children's eyes, the future I wish for them is open, tolerant, welcoming, unified and trusting. I do not see these values embodied in Brexit. Friends, a no-deal Brexit now looks like a runaway train, driven forward by the thumping pistons of ego and false promises. This has no democratic mandate. Our legislature has been suspended, and we must fight for our democracy and our peace, our bread and our health. We need a people's vote to save our democracy.
Councillor Avery, no one else has indicated, oh, yes, someone else, to be followed by councillor Storey. Clean my glasses next week.
Thank you Lord Mayor. I'll be brief, I just want to touch on two things. The first is somewhat contrary to our speaker, that this is really not about Brexit, this is about our basic values of democracy. A large number of the 21 rebels expelled yesterday had voted three times for the withdrawal agreement, that is Brexit. The Prime Minister today and yesterday will continue to say that this is about Brexit. The Parliament is determined to stop Brexit because they're bent on thwarting the will of the people. But people across a huge range of views on Brexit gathered together yesterday and today to support the values of democracy, to support Parliament, because whatever you think about Brexit, you should believe that Parliament should have a say on it, that Parliament is the means by which we make decisions as a country. Whatever you think should happen, then it is Parliament where that decision should be made. And if Prime Minister Johnson has any realistic alternatives that he wants to put to the country, he should put them to Parliament, put them to a vote and test them. This is not about Brexit, this is about whether or not we are governed by a Parliament or whether governed by an aspiring autocrat. And the second thing I want to say briefly is just that it's not of incidental importance that our credibility on democracy is undermined. Just over the last two weeks, we have seen the continuation of terrible protests in the former British territory of Hong Kong, which are about democracy. And Britain as the former colonial power is one of a few number of countries with any real ability to speak up for those people. If our credibility on democracy is undermined, that has real consequences. It is not the case that this is some airy-fairy liberal idea, this is a key important thing that has real value in the world right now. And the second thing we've seen over the last few weeks has been the revocation of Article 370 by the Indian government, which is again about democracy. And as again the former colonial power, it is our place to speak up for democracy. When our ability to do that is undermined, then our ability to effect change in the world is undermined. Prime Minister Johnson has spoken at great length about how he wants to make Britain great again, aping Trump, how he wants to expand our influence on the world. When we undermine our values, we undermine our influence in the world, we undermine our ability to shape events and to press for what I would hope everyone in this chamber supports, decent values of democracy, of fair play, of tolerance. It's incredibly important that we retain what might seem an arcane matter of three or four sitting days, because a principle is at stake, and if we abandon this principle now, we will have a great amount of time to come to regret it.
Councillor Storey to be followed by councillor McCarthy, who would be the sixth speaker, and then councillor Ferguson, who has reserved the right to speak.
Thank you, I will be brief. Democracy is under attack, the Tory government are intent on shutting down Parliament, and astonishingly, they claim this in the name of democracy. You couldn't make it up. What a dangerous paradox. And we need to recognise it as such, the danger. And the people of Newcastle have recognised that, and last weekend they took to the streets in their thousands. Shutting down democracy, it's a dictatorship. I support this emergency resolution, and I call on Westminster to stand up and fight. I also want to draw your attention to something else. On a personal level, the closing of Parliament for me represents the potential loss of years and years of hard work. I've been working with other women in the sector on a domestic abuse bill. That bill was due to get its second reading in Parliament. Sorry, I'm a dead nervous figure. And it risks being kicked in the long grass, and we kind of tolerate that. And I really would say to you, in this country, two women are being killed every single week as a result of domestic abuse. We need that bill to be enacted. Right now, we just need to get behind and make sure that this doesn't happen, and we need to stand up and fight this absolute hideous attack on the democracy and the daily business that needs to happen to make sure that women and children in this country are safe. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Storey. Can I ask council to congratulate her on her maiden speech? And councillor. Councillor McCarthy followed by councillor Ferguson.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I will be brief, because many of the things I plan to say have already been said. Lord Mayor, I first of all want to say we've been here for 27 minutes and things nationally might just have changed, because actually things happening in Parliament seem to be happening really quickly. I think we're in really challenging times, in a place that we wouldn't have even considered we would be at, actually, for several hundreds of years, when democracy was previously thwarted using the royal prerogative. I haven't seen Prime Minister's questions today, but I saw what was written about it online and on social media, and the Prime Minister today refuses to answer questions of MPs who are legitimately asking him questions in the time that is set aside every single week to hold him to account. If he's not willing to be held to account by his colleague MPs, then, you know, actually to be fair, we are all held to account, we stand for election, and we are held to account in our role here in this council chamber. We expect that, we expect politicians to be held to account. But I'm afraid that this Prime Minister is someone who tells lies and to be frank, gives us all a bad name, because the people in our communities think that all politicians tell lies. I think that's really, really bad for democracy. In the UK, I think we've always been proud of our democratic processes, our politics, our political ways, our Parliament has been held in high regard across the world, and I would echo what the leader was saying about countries elsewhere where that is not true. I think councillor Storey referred to the numbers of people who were demonstrating in the city at the weekend. Actually, if you add them up across the country, there were a huge number of demonstrations across the country to show the concerns about that attack on democracy from a dictatorial Prime Minister who to me seems to have no integrity. And I just want to refer, Lord Mayor, to the removal of the whip from the 21 Conservative MPs. I think in our political parties, we've always been able and free to voice our differences. I mean, I guess my challenge around that is that loyalty is a two-way process, and you can't demand loyalty when you don't give it to the very, you know, the previous Prime Minister who was demanding it of our current Prime Minister. And I think many of us will have seen the disrespect from the leader of the House last night in the debate, which I thought was quite frankly appalling. It feels like we're in uncharted waters, in a rubber dinghy that leaks and in a hurricane, Stormy is putting it mildly. I do think, Lord Mayor, denying our MPs the chance to hold a weak government with no majority to account at this time of national crisis is a travesty. It's unfair, unjust and unnecessary. I support this motion.
Councillor Ferguson.
Thank you Lord Mayor. It's councillor Hall noted to
As councillor Hall noted to me as we walked into the chamber this evening, we live in interesting times. We also live in dark times. Our democracy is under threat. Our government seems more interested in playing party political games and manoeuvring for personal advantage than in attempting to heal the deep divisions cutting across society. Various figures at the top of the Tory party seem pathologically obsessed with driving forward with Brexit, come hell or high water. Against this backdrop, Boris Johnson is attempting to shut down Parliament and shut down debate. Our unwritten constitution is being strained to breaking point. This is the second time this chamber has come together cross-party to speak out with one voice, and I am delighted to second councillor Forbes' timely motion. Democracy functions not only through representation, but through fundamental values such as free speech, respect and the rule of law. Essential to a functioning democracy is allowing elected representatives the opportunity to debate, discuss and scrutinise, whether it be here in this chamber or in Westminster. Respect for dissenting voices and alternative points of view is not an optional extra. I sincerely believe that any form of Brexit will harm the economy, and I think we can all agree that a no-deal Brexit will be devastating, not least for our region. I fear for the economy locally, the jobs and livelihoods of so many in our communities in danger. But your position on the issue doesn't matter, this is as fundamental an issue as how our democracy functions. We have a responsibility to come together in the national interest, we have a responsibility to speak with principle and conviction, to say that this is not the way a properly functioning democracy behaves. Equivocation is not an option. This matter should transcend party politics. I am pleased that Newcastle is leading by example by demonstrating a cross-party objection to prorogation, a shameful move on the part of Boris Johnson and his background schemer, Dominic Cummings. Our country is bitterly divided. I agree wholeheartedly that our democracy is under threat, but we must reach out to each other to initiate a dialogue with our communities, to begin to heal divisions and stand up for our democracy. The Brexit process has a long way to go, but that conversation must start now. I commend this motion to the chamber, thank you.
I now call on councillor Forbes to reply.
Thank you colleagues for some extraordinarily important and emotional contributions this evening. Congratulations particularly to councillor Storey on not only a maiden speech, but a very important reminder to us that many important issues which are due to be debated in Parliament risk being lost at a time when we see so little progress on a domestic policy agenda, not only domestic violence, but the future of adult social care, local government funding. Many of these issues that affect our daily work here in this council are being booted into the long grass and not being considered as a result of this prorogation. Those making the case for Brexit in the referendum, a great play of the restoration of parliamentary sovereignty. And yet, they sold their case by saying that Parliament would be sovereign and we were to restore parliamentary rule. It's astonishing to see the hypocrisy of those people who peddled that kind of Brexit with those kind of arguments, now trying to justify the prorogation of Parliament as a way of stifling and shutting Parliament up. And that's not the only hypocrisy on display, because there are a number of cabinet members who in the leadership contest for the Conservative Party actively spoke out against prorogation as a tool. People like Matt Hancock, Sajid Javid, Michael Gove, they all rejected it, all spoke out against it, and yet now, they're silent when it comes to speaking out against it. We have to ask, where are their principles? And our Prime Minister himself, a member of the Bullingdon Club, is therefore clearly used to smashing things up and expecting other people to pay for the clean-up. And his contempt for Parliament was demonstrated in Prime Minister's questions today. If anybody saw it, you'd have seen a rude, derogatory, insulting Prime Minister, not even attempting to vaguely answer the questions being put to him. And as many members have said, this prorogation at this time, in this way, is an assault on our democracy, an assault on our Parliament. We're losing our important principles of plurality, of compromise, of rational debate, and the language that's being used of traitors and betrayal is language that we should be very, very wary of and avoid. Because let's not forget, it was only a few years ago that a British Member of Parliament was murdered by somebody who took those views to the extreme. And that's why I think we have a clear view across the chamber tonight, we have an understanding that our democracy, our precious democracy, is being threatened by this Conservative government, and we must oppose it with all our might to restore the principles that are the very core of our British DNA.
Does council agree this motion? Motion is agreed, thank you. We can move on, we have two petitions received this month. So first of all, I'll call on councillor Shatwell to present a petition from the Pakistan Cultural Society, the Pakistan Muslim Association and Bilal Jamia Mosque.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This petition is presented on behalf of Pakistan Cultural Society and Pakistan Muslim Association. 422 people signed the petition in just two hours at the demonstration for Kashmir in Newcastle on Sunday the 1st of September. We the undersigned call on Newcastle Central MP Cheon Wura and Newcastle City Council leader Nick Forbes to protest the human rights violations that are occurring in Kashmir following the Indian government's unilateral and unconstitutional revocation of Article 370. We request that you press for action by the British government to condemn the actions of the Indian government in revoking Article 370, and to make the strongest representations to the Government of India to end this unwelcome escalation and to reinstate Kashmir's special status.
Thank you, I'll now ask councillor McCarthy, cabinet member, to respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I am very pleased to receive this petition, Lord Mayor, and since this is a matter for government, we will pass that on to the government, thank you.
Thank you, next I'll call on councillor Stone to present a petition on behalf of the residents of Bosworth Gardens, and councillor Dunn is going to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, this has been passed on to me by neighbours, it's not my, it's across my ward boundary, but it's in my neighbourhood. We the undersigned wish to address our concern at recent incidents of antisocial behaviour and neighbourhood disturbance linked to the specialist care facility at Bosworth, 75 Bosworth Gardens, and request operators take appropriate steps to ensure this is addressed, and management and staff of residents, management and staff and residents are aware of the importance of maintaining good relationship with neighbours in our quiet residential community.
Thank you, I'll call on councillor Dunn to respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I am amazed that this question's been raised publicly and not privately with me or the directorate. We as a council, Lord Mayor, have a duty of care as elected members, and we must be conscious at all times of our safeguarding responsibilities. Actually, this issue has already been raised by councillor Huddart, and she had a response in June on exactly the same issue, and I'd be happy to furnish councillor Stone with a copy of that letter. I have to say also that the issues have also been raised with the appropriate ward councillors, they've dealt with the issue, had a public meeting, so, you know, I'm really surprised at this petition raising itself again. As in June, when we wrote to councillor Huddart, we were advised by our Public Protection and Neighbourhoods team that they had not received any complaints at all about antisocial behaviour at or associated with this property. There have been no changes to that, so I will ask council to agree to receive the petition and for it to be passed on to the property managers. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, does council agree to receive the petition? Thank you. We have four requests to address council this evening, so first I will invite Simon McIntosh on behalf of Extinction Rebellion to address council, followed by Tamar Pittman for the Newcastle Green Party. Councillor Forbes will respond to both these addresses together.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Extinction Rebellion have three core demands: tell the truth, act now and move beyond politics. We need action locally as well as globally, and Extinction Rebellion North East have been organising a series of events in support of these aims. You may have heard of the Cycle Go Slow plan for Friday on Great North Road. We applaud Newcastle City Council for adopting the climate emergency, but this is just a start. Our question relates to our core demands. It is, is the council committing to actions now, not just words, which show real leadership on the climate emergency, working with concerned local citizens? Within this question, there are some specifics. What practical measures is the council taking to educate and inform the public of the dangers of climate breakdown and the urgency and extent of the changes needed, changes by the council itself, by citizens and by businesses to avoid or mitigate these changes? Will the council endorse the general strike for climate organised by the UK Schools Climate Network, supported by Trades Union and the International Trades Union Confederation, which is taking place on Friday the 20th of September, including supporting all council employees who wish to engage in this action to do so? Since it adopted the climate emergency, has the council divested from investments in fossil fuel industry and increased its investment in renewable energy, or is it in the process of doing so? And we recall councillor Kemp, you told the last council meeting that the climate change convention that you propose would belong to the city, not the council. So we ask, will you commit to making the convention take the form of a properly resourced citizens' assembly with fully representative members reflecting Newcastle's population? And when will the convention begin its deliberation, and when are the recommendations it may make expected?
Thank you. Tamar, would you like to address us now, please?
Good evening, Lord Mayor and councillors. On behalf of Newcastle Green Party, I'd like to place our thanks on record for the kind invitation councillor Nick Kemp provided to both us and Extinction Rebellion North East to join the climate convention in his response to our questions at the last council meeting. I note that councillor Kemp confirmed that the convention would begin in September, but the format was yet to be decided upon. It is now September, and there's been no announcement of what form the convention will take or when it will begin. I, along with some others, have written to councillor Kemp to ascertain progress, we've yet to receive a response. Perhaps now's a good time to provide us with the details of the convention, what format it will take, when it will take place and who will be invited to participate. When I last raised a question in these chambers, I made a suggestion regarding a car-free city centre, and councillor Kemp had promised to consider this. In fact, he suggested that such a trial could occur on International Car Free Day, which is on September the 22nd. I'm keen to find out what progress has been made by the city council in organising this. I'm sure councillor Kemp would agree with me that to give such a trial the greatest chance of success, the public must be given ample notice of its details, including the extent of the temporary car-free zone. Continuing with the city council's commitments to the environment, I note that at the start of July councillor Forbes announced that the climate impact of all cabinet decisions would be recorded. This was a measure that the Green Party wrote to the Chronicle to support. However, the minutes and preparatory reports on the most recent cabinet meeting of 15th of July, which are all available online for public scrutiny, show that this policy was not adhered to. With the climate impact of decisions not being recorded, if it weren't for the presence of Green Party and Extinction Rebellion activists, as well as councillor Kane's motion regarding the UN Sustainability Goals, would the climate emergency have even got a mention in tonight's meeting, I wonder? Presuming that the climate emergency is regarded with greater gravitas going forwards, I'd be pleased to find out how the climate impact of decisions will be made at future cabinet meetings, how they will be recorded. Will these impacts be recorded in quantitative terms, such as tonnes of carbon dioxide equivalent emitted, both those resulting directly from the council's own activities and those resulting indirectly from city council decisions and policies? What about the implications of those decisions for biodiversity loss and other forms of pollution? And finally, how will the council address the impact of existing council policy that isn't up for review? Without such consideration, decisions already made will potentially lock us into higher emissions in future years, making the challenge even more difficult. Of course, it's not merely enough to assess the climate impact of decisions, it's also necessary to act on this information. Negative climate impacts shouldn't be dismissed in order to chase short-term economic gain. Will the city council make climate impacts their main consideration to ensure its commitment for the city to be carbon neutral by 2030? As the city council have acknowledged in the climate emergency declaration, and as councillor Kemp previously stated, providing an environment that's clean, green and sustainable is key to safeguarding the city for future generations. I welcome councillor Matthew Fokker's motion to place greater emphasis on cycling. The council has already made a commitment to beginning the introduction of such infrastructure through the Cycle City Ambition Fund programme. Will the council commit to its deadlines for completion of existing programmes, including the Ambition Fund, Streets for People project and local cycling and walking infrastructure plan? Will the council implement the £500,000 worth of cycle and pedestrian safety infrastructure improvements already budgeted for enjazment? I also welcome councillor Gareth Kane's motion that the council formally endorse the UN Sustainable Development Goals. I'd like to draw the council's attention to the UN's indicators and a monitoring framework for Sustainable Development Goals report, which researchers at the city's own Newcastle University contribute to. Many of the recommendations of this report will be useful in identifying how the goals relate to council business and how the council can measure and report on its progress. These are the key elements of councillor Kane's motion, that the council commit to identifying, measuring and reporting on progress against these goals. From experience, we'd urge councillor Kane to press for a firm commitment to a deadline for this process, as the council is often quick to promise action and accountability on sustainability, but slow to deliver. Indeed, almost six months after declaring a climate emergency, it's not clear what the council have actually done to address it. Most people expect an organisation to take urgent action when they declare an emergency. I urge councillor Kane to stand with us in holding the council to account for their inaction on this crisis, and I ask councillor Kemp to provide details of the climate convention, the format it will take, when it will take place and who will be invited to it. Thank you.
I call on the leader of council, councillor Forbes, to respond to that address, to both addresses.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, as the addresses were basically about the same issues, I thought it'd be helpful if I replied to both at the same time. And I'd like to thank the people who made the deputations to us this evening and the people here in the gallery, making clear to all of us the need to act on climate change. I'm proud that we're committing ourselves as a council to fighting climate change, making sure that we're doing our bit for global change. We're ambitious for this city to be leading the way on climate change, which is why my party included a commitment to the climate emergency in our local election manifesto alongside a commitment to introducing the Sustainable Development Goals. I believe we were the only party, certainly the only party to get elected. I believe we were the only party, certainly the only party, to get elected onto the council to make such a clear and strong commitment. But it's why we also continue to secure funding for public transport and cycling improvements, for example, the £17 million for ourselves and neighbouring authorities on cycle infrastructure since 2013. We've already installed more than 1,000 solar panel systems in council homes, helping to reduce electricity bills and carbon emissions. But it's worth bearing in mind that the expansion of that programme was scuppered by the government's changes to the feed-in tariff, which has meant that it's no longer financially viable to do it. I've today confirmed some changes to the cabinet structure, creating for the first time a cabinet member for climate change and communities, which will be undertaken by my colleague councillor Claire Penny Evans. I have to say, I thought it was rather unfair to dump her in at the deep end with the responses this evening, which is why I am doing it myself. Although you'll see, the Know Your Cabinet document, which has been revised and reissued, does say that as leader, I will take the lead on climate change and the UN Sustainable Development Goals. In fact, that was set out in that document in May this year. As a council, we've purchased electric vehicles and we've reduced our fuel usage, with diesel usage down by 15%, gas oil down by 37%, and petrol reduced by 75% since 2011. It's worth knowing that the council, as an organisation, a big organisation in the city, is responsible for less than 5% of the carbon footprint of Newcastle. But we recognise that as the local authority, we have an important leadership role to play here. So the next step is to build on this progress with a climate change convention. Later this month, we'll be publishing plans as part of the agenda for the next meeting of Constitutional Committee. Many of the questions today were, quite rightly, focused on how the convention will function, and I want to set out in the limited time available to me some further details on that. The convention will be made up of three key elements. There'll be a cross-party climate change committee, a Newcastle Net Zero Board for the city, and a citizens' assembly style, a citizens' assembly event, sorry, a citizens' assembly organised at a north of Tyne level. The climate change committee will be a politically balanced body of the council, acting as a select committee on the city's preparedness for climate change. It will take evidence from a wide range of experts, partners, and stakeholder groups, and invite members of the public to make contributions to. It may establish task and finish groups on specific issues if needed, and it will promote the evidence around climate change, busting the myths and exploring how we can engage all of our residents in thinking about our impact on the planet. It will provide a focal point for citywide debate and engagement, and it will ultimately advise the cabinet and council on the relative roles that the council, our city partners, and the public can play in responding to the climate crisis, and review options to meet the city's net zero target. The committee will report to cabinet and council by March 2020 at the latest, and meetings of the committee will, of course, be held in public, and I'm sure they will be well attended. The Net Zero Board will bring together the council, our external partners, and others to establish routes to a net zero for Newcastle. It will provide an independent voice external to the council, able to set out challenges and the relative roles of different city partners and central government. Crucially, it will bring in the expertise of our universities into the debate, with membership coming not only from them, but other partners such as the Hospital Trust, who've also declared a climate emergency. Other potential members could include Newcastle Council for Voluntary Service, the Business Improvement District, the Chamber of Commerce, the CBI, Your Homes Newcastle, Nexus and Bus Operators. And their remit would be to establish a potential route to net zero for Newcastle, a process likely to involve commissioning specialist economic and technical studies, as well as identifying large-scale ambitious schemes that will need investment to incentivise the decarbonisation of our economy. And alongside these two bodies, we will be convening a citizens' assembly. I've been working with the North of Tyne Mayor to develop this, and we think it would be sensible to run the assembly on a North of Tyne basis. This would seek the views from a representative group of residents on options and trade-offs in meeting the net zero target, and engage citizens in developing our individual and collective responses. One of the big issues, for example, Lord Mayor, is the role of individual citizens, and whether it is appropriate to simply offset your own carbon footprint, or whether actually we should encourage people to actively reduce their carbon footprint and simply not pass the buck to others or to other parts of the world. It's my view that exporting our carbon footprint doesn't actually solve the global problem. And as the economic lead for the North of Tyne Combined Authority, I'll be working with colleagues to ensure we are securing job creation and investment while focusing on decarbonisation of the economy. Our region needs a Green New Deal, and I'm determined that we will lead the way. Lord Mayor, in conclusion, I would just say that Newcastle is a city which historically has built its success on coal. Coal which powered trade, and was exported around the world and helped power the first industrial revolution globally. But we now have to find a way in which our city leads the world in taking that carbon out of our economy, and we should aim once again to be a beacon of progress, recognised for our innovation around the world. We know the scale of the challenges facing us, and I know that the speakers tonight represent the views of tens of thousands of people across our city. You're absolutely right to challenge, but I also look forward to working with you on the next stages of our response to this emergency. Thank you.
No. Mr McIntosh, you now have a right to respond for up to one minute.
Thank you councillor Forbes. It's good to hear the steps that you've set out, that you're taking, especially about the North of Tyne Citizens Assembly. But will the court of history deem them too little or too late? I want to ask a really important question of all the council's officers, I used to be a senior officer in the east of England, as well as the council members here tonight. What will you say to your children, to your grandchildren, to all young people in 20 years, or 10, or possibly even five years' time, when we will, in the view of credible experts, face huge social change, maybe even breakdown, from global food shortages and migration caused by climate change? What will you be able to say you did to help prevent it? I beg you to be bold, to be innovative, to be determined to help make the huge changes needed today, tomorrow, and every day. Thank you.
And miss Pittman, you now have a right to respond also for up to one minute.
Thank you councillor Kemp. So we have no September start date for the climate convention, no participation in the promised Car Free Day, no commitment to the cycle infrastructure plan for the city or enjazment, as I asked about, and no commitment to reporting on the climate impact of decisions, as we've had no evidence of this yet. I do welcome the fact that some progress has been made on the climate convention, but really, not enough is being done, in my opinion. I think a number of people here would agree on that. So yeah, I look forward to working with you on this in the future, but I hope that you take this a bit more seriously.
Councillor Kane wishes to make a point of order.
Lord Mayor, understanding Order 11G, I would like to propose this matter be referred to cabinet for consideration and decision about any appropriate action, and that cabinet report back on this matter to council. I note that 11G doesn't allow any discussion of the issue.
I take it that is a proposal. Does anyone second that? Councillor Taylor. Does council agree that that action be taken? Right, we'll have to take a vote on this then. It looks as if we're just waiting for councillor Stone to... Okay, that request is defeated, but I have to point out that councillor Forbes in his speech did indicate how he was going to deal with the matter. Okay, if we can move on, I will now invite David Gallan from the Acorn Tenants Union to address council.
My name's David Gallan, I live in Valencourt in the Westgate Maltese, Westgate Road in Newcastle, Arthur's Hill area. I'm a representative of Acorn Newcastle, which is a tenants' union. I live in the Tower Block, I live in the Westgate Maltese of Valencourt, managed by YHN, Your Homes Newcastle. I'd like to thank you to councillor Hobson for tabling item 10 on the agenda. We believe it is an incredible, important motion, and congratulate her for her appointment. We are excited to see what she can do as a cabinet member for housing. However, as tenants of Your Homes Newcastle, our members have concerns with the way that YHN is currently behaving. Unfortunately, we have to admit that there are a lot of vulnerable tenants of YHN who deserve better. Acorn is currently preparing a document for councillors to open up a conversation about how YHN could be better, and could be better, and in it, we highlight the issues the tenants face, they are too numerous to delve into now. We will be delivering this document to councillors later this month, and look forward to you reading it. We hope that you will engage with us to work together to ensure that Tower Block tenants in the city have a positive relationship and a decent service from YHN. That's all. Thank you very much.
Okay, I call on councillor Hobson to respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, David, for bringing this to council this evening. We always welcome feedback from any of our residents, and we look forward to receiving the document you've referred to. And once we have received it, we can consider your suggestions for improvements, and then be able to respond more appropriately, once we've had the opportunity to look at them in more detail. So once again, thank you.
Mr Gallan, you now have a right to respond for up to one minute, should you wish. Do you wish to respond? Yeah? No? Okay, thank you very much. Finally, can I now invite Andrew Gray to put his question to council?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you councillors. My question, I guess, follows on from the first ones we heard. The government's chief environment scientist warned last week that we need to do more to reduce consumption, and if I can quote from the statements he made, Professor Ian Boyd, stated, "We like to consume things, but the more we consume, the more we absorb the resources of the planet. That means we have to grow those resources, or we have to mine them, and in doing that, we generate waste." And he goes on to say, "Emissions are a symptom of consumption, and unless we reduce consumption, we'll not reduce emissions." The council's own waste strategy recognises the need to reduce waste overall with reduction established at the top of the waste hierarchy, above even reuse and recycling. And in their 2012 report, In Place of Growth, steady state Manchester highlighted the need to tackle consumption specifically to reduce advertising, recommending a ban on advertisements in city-controlled spaces within the city of Manchester area. So my question for the council is, will the council agree to end all advertising for consumer goods within or on its own buildings? And will you plan for an end to advertisements for consumer goods within other city-controlled spaces? Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. I call on cabinet member councillor Kemp to respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Mr Gray, for your question. Yes, of course, we agree with the chief environment scientist in moving to reduce consumption. I'm pleased that you recognise our waste strategy, and the need to reduce waste overall is indeed a key driver in this strategy. As you know, there is much activity taking place across the city to do just this already. We've seen real positive steps, we've removed non-essential single plastic from across the city council estate, we're working with local communities across the city, including places such as Ouzbourn to make areas plastic and food waste-free. We've reviewed operations of the current household waste resource centres, being informed by the excellent work of our groundbreaking Waste Commission, to look to encourage better use of the facilities, to encourage more of the materials taken to be removed from going to landfill, and are working on the development of reuse centres. We're engaged with the government's waste consultation in responding to the more than 100 questions, and will be making our suggestions to this. We are undertaking a full review of our household waste resource centres, and this is looking to future-proof our offer to our citizens. We, of course, have reuse and reduction at the heart of this review, and we're looking at examples of best practice across the globe. I believe it is through the work that we undertake as a Labour administration, through our engagement with schools, community groups, voluntary organisations and businesses, through our online material, that we can advise and inform our residents of the benefits of the reduction of consumption, and of appropriate behaviour change we can all undertake without becoming a nanny state. We are running our campaign, Your City, Your Home, looking to the wider issues of litter, and of course, this includes the blight of fly-tipping and dumping, and we know much of this material could be reused. With regard to the specific question on the banning of advertisement, it is relevant, I think, that we note the date of the report which the question refers to, that being 2012, which is interestingly pre the austerity years. I've not been able to confirm through conversations with officers in Manchester if that proposal has actually been enforced in Manchester. I would also offer this response that we have a very considered policy on advertising, and a clear and a practical, commercial, and moral basis as to what can be advertised. I'd be pleased to provide you with a copy of the policy. This policy seems to strike a balance between the council's own needs to communicate with the public and the commercial use of the council infrastructure. And the council will accept advertising, including sponsorship from the council, council partners, and external organisations, but with the following exemptions: promoting and citing illegal, violent, or socially undesirable acts, promotion availability of tobacco products. I'm aware of the times, I'm not going to run through them all, but there are seven, and it's item seven on the policy. What I would add is that in the face of continued onslaught of local government by current government and the coalition, this council is operating in a different space than 2012. We have been innovative and imaginative in our approaches to managing waste, and creative in our engagement with local people, in informing how we can all contribute to this significant agenda. We, of course, see advertising as an income source for the council to enable us to continue to deliver those essential services our residents rely upon, and this is increasingly important due to these incessant cuts we face. We are mindful of what is appropriate to advertise, and this is clearly set out in the policy I've outlined, and we ensure that we administer this policy effectively.
Mr Gray, you have one minute to respond.
Thank you for that, and yes, pleased to having a copy.
Thank you for that, and yes, pleased to having a copy of your current advertising policy, I'd be pleased to receive that and look at it in more detail. I don't think anybody locally would think that it was being a nanny state to remove some of the advertising hoardings we see in Northumberland Street, but I do take the point about austerity, that's why our submission about waste was called recycling under austerity, because we recognise that a good waste strategy is actually about a long-term, economically sustainable strategy, as well as more environmentally sustainably. And when it comes to advertising as an income source, I would put a plea to you to... My particular question was around advertising of consumer goods, that actually went beyond Manchester, was recommending a ban on advertising at the Manchester Group, but I was focusing very much on the consumer goods element because of that necessity to tackle the climate emergency that we've heard so much from the good people of Exar and others tonight. But if we're going to talk about income and austerity, absolutely, the council is facing huge austerity, but it is not going to meet those targets by being ultimately unsustainable, because the money in Newcastle is not just about the money you get in from your income sources, it's about the money that goes out, the money that goes out to corporate HQ profits, the money that goes out to billionaire developers in the city centre. So I'd like to ask you to stick by your principles, add consumer goods in to something to consider in advertising policy, and remember to focus, when you're looking at income, on plugging the leaks, plugging the money that's going out of Newcastle, rather than always focusing on new sources of income. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can move on to the agenda, item six, which is the Standards Committee annual report, and I'll call on Mark Scrimshaw, the independent chair of Standards Committee, to introduce the report for information. I should say that, to congratulate Mark, this is actually the 20th occasion he's presented this report to council, so well done, Mark, and thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I'm not sure it's a matter of congratulations. Thank you, it's been a 20-year-long pleasure. I've not got a long time, but I'd just like to start kind of in reverse order with thanking people who have helped the work of the committee over the last year. The officers, John Softley, Helen Wilson from Legal, Linda Scott and all her staff at Democratic Services have been amazing. A very, very impressive bunch of councillors from both parties that we've had on the committee who have helped drive forward a consensual ethical behaviour pattern. And most of all, my laudable deputy, Wendy Lawson, who's sitting at the back, who's been a fantastic addition to the committee and helps drive the work forward. I would like to just point out a few things for your perusal. Paragraph seven on the Committee for Standards in Public Life report on local government, very creditably, an awful lot of the things that they've suggested are things that we put forward in our proposals, and just listed a few of them. We suggested councils should be provided with additional sanctions, up to and including suspension for a limited period for the most serious cases. The lack of sanctions has been the biggest bugbear, I would say, for members of the committee, and we suggested that sanctions which fall short of suspension but restrict to members' privileges should be restored, explored. We suggested councils should have the option to have voting co-optees on committees dealing with standard matters, where these are all things that the CSPL have taken up. We suggested that the current requirements regarding disclosable pecuniary interests should be amended to ensure that a member is not prohibited from participating in a meeting where they have a DPI, but its connection to the matter under consideration is remote. We felt that was quite a prohibitive thing for people, for a lot of members. So those are just some of the things that we've put forward, things that we've learned during the years of work that we've done, have put forward to the CSPL that they've picked up. They've also put forward 15 best practice recommendations, most of which we already do, but one really good one that I was very particularly pleased to see is the Code of Conduct and prohibition of bullying and harassment. And the CSPL have pretty much word for word copied our definition of sort of behaviour covered by bullying and harassment, and that is extremely gratifying. On paragraph 12, registration of gifts and hospitality, those of you of long standing will expect me to have something to say about this, it's fantastic news. 95.3% of possible returns, up last year from 86.6, and number of returns for a member, 11.5, going up from 10.4. This is very, very good news, and I can only assume that the new intake of members is really, really good. So thank you. We do think it's very important that the public see, even if your return is nil, that we're taking these matters seriously. And finally, on our future work, it includes something that's been a bit of a running issue for the past couple of years. We plan to include a review of the council's guidance on the use of social media. We see this as an important issue as the use of social media increases. The committee is keen to help members avoid being in potential breach of the Code of Conduct as a result of their use of social media. In other words, we're not looking to restrict the use of social media, simply to tell or help people know how it can best be used during and after meetings. So that, I think, is a very significant part of our future work. I'm going to stop there, because I think those are the things I would like you to concentrate on mainly, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mark. Councillor King has indicated he wishes to comment, and councillor John Paul Stevenson. Anyone else please wave?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you very much, Mr. Scrimshaw, for your long years of service to this council. My question to you would be about the CSPL's advice about the six-month suspension without allowances. Generally, I agree with this myself, but my concern would be for those that do not engage with the standards process or show any signs of reflection upon a violation, that it might come to the Standards Committee in the first place. Would you be in favour of extending suspension if there has been no engagement with the problem that they would be brought to your committee for consideration?
Bless you. Yeah, it's a very tricky issue, this, and I know why they brought it up. We didn't specifically ask for specific penalties. I'm acutely aware that we tread, and you've talked an awful lot about democracy tonight, an awful lot. I'm particularly aware of treading on the rights of people who are elected representatives of the people of this city. I think that is a really serious thing to take on, and that makes me very uneasy that we could have the right to withdraw rights and privileges from people that their constituents have elected. So I think we'd have to think extremely carefully about that, and that's why I'd be in favour of penalties that don't stop them carrying out legitimate constituents of business. I'm also aware it's a very difficult subject, this, and that if people simply refuse to ignore what we say and what the council follows up to say, what do we do about it? I can't answer that. I'd be happy to be given some sort of lead on what we could do, but this is... It's only happened once, and it's had a lot of repercussions, but mainly, mainly, there are people who are members of one of the two political parties. I'm delighted to say that both Labour and the Liberal Democrats have been extremely proactive in maintaining ethical standards, and listening to us and talking to us about the behaviour of members, who have usually apologised, got on with it very well. I take your point, councillor King, if there's somebody who simply refuses to engage... Boris Johnson refuses to say what Parliament does what happens to him. These are tricky questions, and we would willingly accept guidance from the CSPL.
Councillor Stevenson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to Mark for your excellent stewardship of the committee, and also to Wendy and the staff for their support. I'm someone cursing councillor King at the moment for stealing my question a little bit, it's on a very similar theme, but I've framed it a slightly different way in order to give you some... There are perhaps some new members in the chamber tonight who weren't here for your report last year. So my question is, could you briefly outline for new members how sanctions could be enacted by political groups? And also, what would happen if, and it might not be appropriate to refer to individual cases, so completely hypothetically, of course, if an independent member of council chose to act like a spoilt brat and throw his toys out of the pram in front of the Lord Mayor?
I couldn't possibly comment, John Paul. I think we did everything we possibly could. I think we were... I bent over backwards to ensure that the independent member in question had a fair hearing, had his supporters in the meeting, able to ask questions. We... I think we all felt there were members from both parties on that panel. I think we all agreed that what we put forward was reasonable, and he chose to ignore it. And as I said to councillor King, I'm really not sure what we can do, and I'd like the CSPL to give us some guidance on that. If a member of a political party did something and then refused penalties, it's never happened, but I can't imagine that going to the chief whip wouldn't have serious repercussions. We've always felt before that we've had extremely good relationships with the leaders and whips of both parties, and that if we've had anything to say, either in general or about their members, they've listened and acted upon it, so I don't have any concerns about that.
Thank you very much, Mark. Does councillor agree to receive the report? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you, council. See you next year, hopefully, if we still got interest.
If we move on to item seven, I'll call on councillor Jackie Robinson to move the report on the city council meeting cycle to be seconded by councillor Durant.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, you'll have to excuse me because I'm in excruciating pain, so just bear with me. All it is, is for the recommendation to put the extra meeting in in October, take away the April one, because we have a lot of business in between September until January, February. So all constitutional had a meeting, it was discussed, and we agreed, so I would like to just move the report, please.
Councillor Durant? You wish to speak on it? Councillor Taylor? Followed by councillor Ashby?
Lord Mayor, the Liberal Democrat group do not agree with getting rid of the April meeting of council. If we need the October meeting, which we all agree we do, and we agree that at our last council meeting, that doesn't mean that we have to take out another meeting instead. We can't say that we can't afford democracy. We're told in this report that there isn't a lot of business in April, so I thought I'd have a quick look and see. This April, we had a very important debate on a public petition about climate change. There were two public questions in a public address, three cabinet member reports, and motions on three extremely important issues, public health, social rights and the climate emergency. When we look at April 18, there was a debate on a public petition on green infrastructure and biodiversity, the council's pay policy, two cabinet member reports and a report from the director of public health. There were motions on decision-making, which the Labour Party decided to close down because it was an opposition motion, and a motion on modern-day slavery. April 17, we had a debate on a large public petition on school crossing patrol, the education annual report, three cabinet member reports, and there were no less than seven motions on that agenda, none of which could be debated because the guillotine fell. Now, if the Labour group think that's insufficient business for a meeting, I find that very difficult to understand. The problem with what's being suggested is that because there is no time for real debate on other issues at the meeting in March which discusses the budget, the effect of this change means that between February and the end of June or early July, there is no real chance for public questions, petitions or motions to be debated. They think that's democracy, I don't, and considering the debate we had at the beginning of this meeting about closing down democracy, I think they should think very seriously about this suggestion.
Councillor Ashby?
Lord Mayor, there's a mighty struggle going on between Parliament on behalf of the people and the executive. 2015, the executive Newcastle City Council reduced the amount of public scrutiny and debate via full council. In Parliament, this is rightly branded unacceptable, nay, undemocratic, by all the opposition parties, and indeed, in the emergency debate here this evening. It was and is equally unacceptable here. With only seven business meetings a year, the burden is light, yet while reviewing and changing dates, the Labour group has not sought to return to the 10 meetings per year under the Liberal Democrats' administration. At a minimum, we should have an additional midsummer meeting and a pre-Christmas one, so that scrutiny and debate are undertaken and seen to be undertaken. The council taxpayers of this great city deserve better. I cannot support this report, and call on the administration to ask the Constitutional Committee to think again.
I'll call on councillor Robinson to reply, if you can.
Can I get back, please, because I'm starting to sweat and freeze? I'm not very well. I will get back to you as soon as I can, if you just bear with me.
Councillor Robinson has promised to respond, I guess, by email. Can you please make sure that this is a full council meeting, that we all receive your email reply, please, and I hope you'll be recovered very quickly?
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Does council agree to the recommendations of the report? No? In that case, indeed, we will have to vote on it, yes. Mobiles at the ready? Okay? Sorted out at the back there? Well, the vote has indicated agreement to accept the recommendations of the report. So if we can move on to item eight, which is the cabinet member update, in this case, the leader of the council, which there are 25 minutes allotted for this, and I'll use a certain amount of discretion, depending on how the time goes. Councillor Forbes?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce my portfolio report for the previous year, and it's structured around the council's five political priorities, and sets out in high-level terms what we've done to further progress in each of these over the last year. And it does, of course, raise important points about local government policy and of national interest, and I just want to touch on a few of those by way of introduction to the report. Firstly, as members will know, we've had virtually a... Firstly, as members will know, we've had virtually a decade of austerity. And this is clearly reflected in the range and scope of council services and activities that we are able to provide. By 2020, local government will have lost sixty pence in every pound of funding that came from government grants prior to 2010. In Newcastle, we know that the cuts that we've faced have been far deeper than the cuts in many other areas. There has been a distinct political bias to the implementation of austerity. And yet, what we've sought to do throughout this time is, yes, protect the vulnerable in our city who've been impacted on by the compound nature of austerity, but also to invest in making sure that Newcastle is a city which has a great future by creating jobs and bringing in investment and showing this city has not lost its fighting spirit. And in the council, we've constantly sought new innovative ways of achieving outcomes, engaging with communities in new conversations, strengthening our collaborations with partners and introducing new technologies. And I must say, I'm immensely proud of the hard work done by staff across the council who've risen magnificently to the challenge of change that we've faced. And you may have seen the Chancellor's announcement today about the spending review and his bold commitment that austerity is over. I have to say, it doesn't feel like austerity is over when you start to look at the figures. He announced 3.65 billion pounds for local government, failing to say that 1.1 billion of that nationally will come from council tax and adult social care increases. The government once again are instructing us to raise council tax. And the detail, of course, will come in the local government spending review, but I have to say, I have little confidence of a Conservative government being fairer to the North this year than they have been in previous years. And we know that we face serious cost pressures, particularly in children's social care and adult social care, with exponential rising demand. What we've had in recent years have been lots of sticking plasters, but no long term solutions being put forward. That's why Newcastle is one of the many councils around the country that have worked collaboratively to put forward alternative proposals for a green paper on adult social care, in an attempt to try to force the government to bring forward the adult social care green paper that they themselves have been promising for more than two and a half years now. So clearly, Lord Mayor, austerity, despite what the Chancellor might say, has not yet gone away. And we've debated in this council chamber many times in many contexts Brexit. And I am absolutely firmly convinced, it's not just my view, it's backed up by Treasury statistics, that a no deal scenario would have a devastating impact on our economy in this region. So following discussions with the mayor and other North Tyneside colleagues, I'll be leading a Brexit task force, ready to respond to the challenges, some of which we can predict, others which we can't yet, that our businesses will face in a no deal or poor deal scenario. The government have made much of the extra money, the extra two billion that they've announced today for preparing for Brexit. On top of the five billion that they announced earlier in the summer, that brings the government total to seven billion, of which 90,000 has been allocated to this council. Hardly enough for us to start to assess the scale of the impact of Brexit, let alone come up with any serious measures to mitigate it. We have, yet again, a drop in the ocean, which is simply helping us to understand the scale of the problem that we might face. And that's why, Lord Mayor, particularly over the last year, I've put significant effort into breathing new life into our international relationships. I travelled earlier in the year to Gelsenkirchen to celebrate 70 years of our twinning. And just imagine, actually, the extraordinary courage and bravery of Newcastle politicians going to Germany in 1949 to establish a twinning arrangement with people that just four or five years previously we'd been at war with. And those bonds of friendship which were built through the twinning forces, the twinning arrangements, have been part of the fabric, the social fabric, that have bound us together as people right across Europe over the last 70 years. But I also hosted a visit from the mayor of Nancy, and I visited Nancy to celebrate 65 years of twinning, where we were granted two honours as a city. Firstly, the naming of a street, Rue de Nancy, although I've been discussing about how we could return the compliment, and I think we're all in agreement that a Nancy Street would not necessarily be the most appropriate response, but we are looking seriously at what we might do. But I was also given the honour of taking the salute and greeting veterans alongside the mayor of Nancy and the regional governor on Bastille Day, the first time ever that a foreigner has done this in France, in Nancy. And I think that shows that despite the messages that some of our national politicians are giving internationally about Brexit and the positioning of this country, there is still a warm bond of friendship between ourselves and our European partners that in these difficult times, we really need to continue to nurture and develop. So, Lord Mayor, this report represents another solid year of delivering for our city's residents. I'm immensely proud of the progress that we're making in the most difficult of circumstances, and I'm pleased to commend it to council this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for clarity, the street is the Rue de Newcastle. Councillor Kane?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Forbes for bringing your report to council. We've had some fine words from councillor Forbes earlier this evening on climate change, the climate emergency, and there are more in the report. Of course, I am interested in what the substance is behind those words, and I hope that, first of all, he'll show some leadership in this issue and ensure that tonight we get time to debate items 12 and 13 on the agenda, which are very relevant to climate change and sustainability in general. I spotted a slight contradiction in the report. On page one, it mentions a target of 34% reduction, whereas in section three, the target adopted by council in April of this year of carbon neutral by 2030 is quoted, and I was wondering whether he'd like to clarify the difference between the two. But more importantly, it's five months since that climate emergency was called, and all we have heard about is the makeup of the Climate Change Convention. Now, my definition of an emergency is that action has to be taken immediately, not deferred until March 2020, almost a year since the emergency was declared. So aside from, and this isn't a criticism of the convention, of course, we have to work in partnership with others, but aside from that, what policy changes have been made in the last five months to address the climate emergency? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Get councillor Higgins to, I was going to call councillor Stone, but he's not here, but I see councillor Hoddart is waiting for that. Councillor Higgins?
Oh, you're taking all the questions together?
Yes, please.
Well, mine's rather more concise than the last one, but anyway, can I just first of all thank council leader for, again, for his very informative report and really the very positive things that are included in that report in very difficult times that we're going through at the moment? But my question relates to the living wage. In his report, councillor Forbes quite rightly expresses pride in pointing to the fact that Newcastle City Council was the first in the region to introduce the living wage as an important part of our anti-poverty strategy. Can I therefore mention my own sense of pride as a trustee of Scottswood Community Garden, which is the first and longest accredited living wage employer in the region? Would the leader of council therefore wish to join me in congratulating everyone at the Scottswood Community Garden for this wonderful achievement and encourage others in the city, including our local football team, to follow this marvellous example? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Hoddart, to be followed by councillor Avery.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank councillor Forbes for his report. And I wanted to ask councillor Forbes a couple of questions which link into items actually previously mentioned, previously mentioned this evening about climate change, and your report, which mentions environmental issues and the cost of removing 7,000 tonnes of rubbish. Also in your report, you refer to the 60 cultural and sporting events that have been held, like the Mall of the Great North Run, magic weekends, et cetera. And you've also been in the press recently flagging up future rugby matches to be played in the city. And we have no problem with these events and the income and interest they generate for the city. So the first question I want to ask is, how many of those 60 cultural and sporting events were designated as plastic free by you and how did you achieve it? I'll wait for the answer. And wondered if you heard what happened at Wimbledon this year when they actually gave everybody a recycled bottle to use and fountains around the place, and they saved tens of thousands of plastic bottles. It was almost half a million. So I think that's a good place to start for some of the cultural events. And I wanted to ask you if the next set of rugby and similar cultural events are going to be declared plastic free? Thank you.
Councillor Avery, to be followed by councillor Stone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I'll also try to be brief. So again, I'd like to thank leader for his report, and there's a lot of really useful detail on public transport, which, as we all know, is an incredibly important part of fighting climate change and is the sort of practical work we in Labour are endeavouring in order to reduce climate emissions. So I wonder if you can say a bit more about the emerging things which are happening in relation to HS2 and some of the other bids we have and some of the other aspirations we have for rail and light rail across the region?
Councillor Stone, to be followed by councillor Holland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Apologies for being a little bit out of my place before, is it my battery for the e-voting? The problem with e-voting is you need some charge on your phone to be able to do it. My question was going to be maybe a little bit short notice for a response at this stage, but obviously there was the CSR was announced earlier on today, and I was wondering if councillor Forbes had any view on what he felt that was going to do for the city. I know that there is obviously some potential for new funding for social care, but I suspect that it will not be enough. Any initial comments on that? Thank you.
Councillor Holland, to be followed by councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Forbes for your report. I'm going to bring my question back around to austerity, because there's no doubt that austerity and welfare reform has had a devastating effect on many people in our city. The shambles that's going on in Parliament at the moment and all the arguments around Brexit, I do believe that people's anxiety is increasing around issues around wealth and their wellbeing. Would I be correct in thinking that dealing with the fallout of Brexit will lead to the council having to provide more support for our residents, within our limited resources, of course? Thank you.
Councillor Ferguson, followed by councillor Postlethwaite.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I welcome the announcement of a Brexit task force. I wondered, does councillor Forbes regret referring to Brexit planning as naval gazing this time last year, as reported in the Chronicle, and can we anticipate swift progress on the matter? Thank you.
Councillor Postlethwaite.
Thank you. It was wonderful to be present at the signing ceremony in Newcastle, where we celebrated the renewal of our twin cities relationship with Nancy and France, with our French counterparts. At that event, Laurent Enard, the mayor of Nancy, spoke of the importance of learning the language of the other country, and we heard about how five of Nancy's schools are bilingual, with children learning sport, science and mathematics in English from the age of six. Were you able to learn more about these schools on your visit to Nancy? How do you think we may be able to do better here in Newcastle to open up the possibilities of Europe and the wider world to all of the children who grow up here?
Councillor Ashby, to be followed finally by councillor Ave.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The leader's report on page 31 of the PAC flags the success in attracting events in Newcastle, which of course bring economic benefits. And yet the draft budget papers seem to be proposing a cut in the money spent on such activity, and if it works so well, why are you considering investing less?
Councillor Ave? No. Okay, can I call on councillor Forbes to respond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, colleagues, for the usual schmorsk board of issues and questions. Councillor Kane asked about climate change, and I've spoken a lot about climate change this evening. It's really important that we bust some of the myths around climate change, particularly where carbon is actually produced in our economy. Nearly two thirds of the carbon in an urban area comes from domestic and commercial energy consumption, and another significant chunk, about a quarter, comes from transport, neither of which is directly under the remit of the city council. In fact, less than 5% of the carbon in the environment in our city comes from city council activities, and we will come up with a plan and will, are already working on plans to reduce that. But that means that our positioning on climate change has to be about leadership for the city and dealing with those really tricky issues about reducing energy consumption for commercial and domestic properties, and ensuring that the energy that is used comes from renewable and sustainable sources. And that's why I think we need to link our actions around climate change to a new deal, a green new deal for the economy. Because insulating our homes, ensuring that we have the right measures in place for people to conserve and consume less energy, making sure that people are able to replace their heating systems to more sustainable fuel sources, making sure that we can install solar panels at scale, will all require significant investment and in some cases, changes in government policy or legislation. So there is a lot that we need to do and lead on for the city. And the previous target that we had was reducing the carbon footprint of the city by 34% by 2030. We're now saying that we want to be carbon neutral by 2030. That is a very significant and much more ambitious target. And by the way, I remember when the Liberal Democrat administration, their target was to reduce carbon by 34% by 2050. So this administration is being far more ambitious than the Liberal Democrat administration was before us. Councillor Higgins, I'm always delighted to congratulate organisations which are paying the living wage, because I think the living wage is not just a commitment to investing in people, it's one of the ways that we tackle in-work poverty, which is such a blight on so many of our communities. I've visited the Scottswood Community Garden many times, I'm really impressed with the work that they do. I think it's a fabulous organisation, and anybody who hasn't been is really missing a fantastic opportunity to go and see community action and values in a stunning setting. And of course, I would encourage all employers in the city to introduce a living wage. I note that our football team pays some of its employees rather more than a living wage, and it would be, I think, magnificent if they would match that by paying their lowest-paid staff at least the living wage. Councillor Hoddart talked about, and councillor Ashby talked about the events that we have been holding in the city or are planning to hold. I have to say, one of the great privileges for me over the summer was attending the opening and closing ceremonies of the World Transplant Games, which were an absolute joyous celebration of the gift of life, encouraging transplants, encouraging donors to register and proving that there is so much life from people who have received transplants. It was an absolutely amazing spectacle and, of course, deeply moving that Newcastle was the host to such a fantastic international event. It was very moving to see the flags from so many different countries in our city centre. And I know that the people who attend, there's some 1,400 athletes, two and a half thousand people overall, really enjoyed their time in Newcastle and took away very fond memories. And that's one of the reasons why we do big events. It's not just about the economic impact, important though that is, it's about the community legacy that we can leave and also the reputation of our city that it promotes to the wider world. to the wider world. Because I have to say, it still depresses me that it often takes people to come and visit Newcastle in person to realise what a great city this is. And consistently, when people come here for the first time, they go away with a sense of amazement and wonder at this amazing city that they've just been to stay in. And that's why I'm particularly pleased that not only have we got the opening ceremony for the Rugby League World Cup in 2021 at St James' Park, but now an additional three games to be played at Kingston Park, which will firmly put us on the map. Now, it's important to remember that the council doesn't provide catering at such events, and therefore, all we can do is encourage a reduction in plastic. But for example, like the events like the World Transplant Games, where the organising partner was NGI, we were able to ensure that they were plastic-free. And other events, particularly those where we have sponsorship or involvement from Northumbrian Water, are moving to be plastic-free as well. So we are making very significant and good progress in doing so, and proving that there are alternatives to single-use plastics. Councillor Avery asked me about HS2, and I was pleased to be invited to be part of the Northern Powerhouse Partnership's review of HS2, making recommendations to the Oakby Review, which is the government's review into HS2. Rather more reviews than trains, I have to say. But the important point for me is that HS2, at the moment, is a vehicle for getting investment in the rail infrastructure in the north, and ensuring that the north-east is connected not just to the major northern cities of England, Leeds, Manchester, Liverpool and Sheffield, but also to Edinburgh and to Scotland. And there are big decisions to be made by the country and the government around the twenty-first century development of rail routes around the UK. I very much hope that Newcastle will be the route that trains choose to run on between England and Scotland. Because if they don't, if the government chooses to take them up the west coast rather than the east coast, then there's a very real risk that our region will become an isolated backwater on the new twenty-first century rail infrastructure. That's why it's really important that we continue to argue for the improvements that we want to see on the east coast main line, the four-tracking of it, north of Doncaster, right the way up to Edinburgh, the improvements in the level crossings, which at the moment prevent the full speed being operated on the line, the link from Church Fenton through to Leeds, so that we can connect Northern Powerhouse Rail and HS2. And the opportunity that this presents is for the government to start work on new rail infrastructure in the north rather than the south. So the other point that I have been making to the review is that this is a great opportunity for the government to create an economic boost and create thousands of jobs here in the north by starting the building of HS2, or Northern Powerhouse Rail, or whatever we want to call it, here from Newcastle, both north and south. Councillor Stone asked about the spending review, and it's fair to say that all we know at the moment are the headline figures. The detail will come in the local government settlement, which, as members will know, traditionally comes as close to Christmas as the government could possibly make it, thereby ensuring that all of our directors of finance around the country have a nervous wait before Christmas. But I think it's fair to say, as I was saying earlier in a previous part of the council meeting, despite the headline announcement that austerity is over, it doesn't look like it's over for local government. There might be better-than-average settlements for the police, for hospitals and for schools. But the rationale for that, I suspect, is that they win more votes than talking about vital council services. And it looks to me like there's a naked political element of the spending review that's been announced today, rather than one which really addresses the serious deficiencies in funding for many of the services which are such a vital helpline for people in this city. And councillor Holland asked about support that we can give for Brexit. Well, I've already talked about the Brexit task force that I'll be leading on behalf of the Combined Authority, and I said that there were some known challenges, but there will be unknown challenges as a result of that, depending on whether we have a deal or no deal. But there are other challenges too. One of the issues that we could face is a relatively significant increase in food prices in a short period of time. That will impact on the council in the food that it provides for people through, for example, school meals and our home meal service and other parts of our activity. But it will also impact very heavily on low-income households. And I'm asking the question, will there be government recognition of that through the welfare system? I've seen absolutely no sense that the government understands that this could have a very profound impact. I suppose if you're a multimillionaire in government, then food prices don't really matter to you, although you'd think that Jacob Rees-Mogg could at least afford his own bed. But it's, I think, another example of how this government is so woefully out of touch that they have no understanding about what life is like in real terms. I'm also very pleased, Lord Mayor, that we are, I think, the only council between Leeds and Edinburgh to provide a specific helpline for people, for assistance, to provide assistance and advice and support around applying for the settled status scheme. And yet, the announcement by the Home Secretary just a few weeks ago, that there was a potential for all reciprocal arrangements to end on the first of November, crashed our helpline with the numbers of people calling in to seek advice. There is no doubt there are some extremely worried people in this city about what their status might be post-Brexit. And let's not forget also that there are millions of expats living abroad who may well lose their reciprocal rights to free healthcare in the countries that they're living in, and may suddenly find themselves having to uproot themselves and move back to the UK, which could provide a significant additional strain on our health and care services here. And councillor Postlethwaite asked about languages, and I have to say, the experience of language teaching in other European countries really puts our education system to shame. We don't start learning languages until the age of eleven. And yet, as councillor Postlethwaite has mentioned, most schools in France, children start learning English, and other languages also actually, at primary school, aged five or six. And as she's referred to, there are five dual-language schools in Nancy. And that's not just teaching a different language, that's entire lessons across the entire curriculum in two different languages, which is a remarkable investment in children learning several languages at once. We can't do anything to impact on the national curriculum, but it is one of those things that I think as a country we should seriously reflect on, because we have a natural inclination to assume that people around the world will be able to speak English. And I think it's a rather arrogant approach, frankly, to assume that people will continue to do so. I think the children of the future would be very well-served if they learnt foreign languages at a much earlier age in the future. And finally, I'm not entirely sure what councillor Ashby is referring to when he talks about cuts to events in the budget, because we haven't published any budget consultations for proposals yet. So perhaps he's mixing them up with something else that he's read. If he wants to have a word with me or email me, I'm quite happy to try and put him right if he'll tell me what he's talking about. But we are working on a series of budget proposals to bring forward for public consultation, as always, but we haven't finalised the details of those yet. So I can just say to him, there are no proposed cuts to the events budget yet. What we're seeking to do is to ensure that they continue to be more successful and that we continue to attract more big national and international events to our city, because they're part of what makes this a great city and puts us on the map as a great place to hold fantastic events, which will benefit not just to our residents, but to our city's growing reputation as a place to do business and hold great activities. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Forbes. Does councillor agree to receive the report? Yes, thank you. And agenda item nine, a list of appointments which are before you, are the appointments agreed as set out? Agreed, thank you. Move on to item ten, which is a notice of motion on council housing. I'll call on councillor Hobson to move this motion to be seconded by councillor McCarthy.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I welcome the opportunity to bring this motion to council as part of our city's celebration of a hundred years of council housing. The thirty-first of July nineteen nineteen saw the birth of council housing through the Housing Act, or the Addison Act as it was commonly known, an ambitious task to local authorities to build five hundred thousand new homes within three years, and make Britain a fit country for heroes to live in post-World War One. This was a hugely important step forward in housing provision, as it made housing a national responsibility, as well as tasking local authorities with developing new housing and rented accommodation. This act, along with further acts, gave more power and resources to local authorities to address the acute housing shortage. Across the country, slum housing was cleared and a million new homes were eventually built. There was a clear link then between a decent home and your wellbeing. In Newcastle, the first homes built as a result of the Addison Act were on the Pendour Estate and in Walker. Many of these homes remain today. Council housing within Newcastle has a fascinating, sometimes controversial, history. However, the stories from the variety of council housing built is being told this year across the city, from homes fit for heroes to prefab houses, from tower blocks and cities in the sky to the biker wall and the council houses of the future. Council housing continues to play a vital part in our city, and a huge thanks goes to staff from YHN for their hard work in supporting our council tenants. We believe, as the leader has pointed out in his report to council this evening, that everybody deserves a decent home within Newcastle, and a quarter of our residents choose to live in a council home. And it isn't just about the buildings of homes, but about building the communities where people can live, raise families, grow old in an environment where they feel safe and secure. And we know the impact that right-to-buy has had on council housing. Decimated housing stock contributing to the national housing shortage that we now face. And it is right that we call for the right-to-buy to be urgently reviewed and call on the government to enable local councils to build more council houses. We are best placed to know what we need and to get on and build them. Our housing statement from two thousand and seventeen to twenty included the delivery of greater choice of affordable housing, homes for our aging population and specialist housing for people who require care and support, for example, those with physical disabilities or with learning disabilities. And we have delivered this right across the city, and there's more to come, building council homes, truly affordable homes and secure tenancies. The housing crisis is a failure of government. If a post-war nineteen nineteen government could take on the challenge of building hundreds of thousands of council homes, then a two thousand and nineteen government, which I'm ashamed of, should be ashamed of themselves of the lack of progress that they've made. The green paper published last year fails to even tackle the supply of council houses in any shape. The scandal raised recently of children, homeless children being housed in shipping containers, raised by the Children's Commissioner, some two hundred thousand children in England homeless. Within this report, the commissioner did highlight as good practice of work here in Newcastle, that we've been doing in partnership through the homelessness prevention pilot. Between two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, the council, YHN and partners have prevented over four thousand cases of homelessness. Government actions such as universal credit and the bedroom tax have impacted on our tenants and residents, but work has been done by us to mitigate against the worst of these as best we can. YHN have a programme that has led to success in supporting tenants and leaseholders into training and employment over the last year, more than just providing housing. As the government dither to get on, we get on and deliver the best outcomes for our tenants and our residents. Finally, Lord Mayor, I'd like to thank all the residents, the tenants, the community groups, Your Homes Newcastle, Newcastle and Northumbria University, who have helped to deliver the celebrations along with support and sponsorship from businesses, including Tullent, ID Partnership, Keep Mot and Riders, and here's to the next hundred years of council housing in Newcastle. Thank you.
councillor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I'm delighted to second this motion that's before us this evening. Lord Mayor, home is where the heart is, is quite a common statement, but a home is also a basic entitlement, a basic right, its core to our wellbeing, it's at the heart of all of our lives, it's the foundation on which we raise our families, it's the bedrock of our dreams and aspirations. Many of us take a home for granted, and we recognise that it isn't true for everyone, actually councillor Hobson's just mentioned that. For too many people, the housing pressures they face are getting worse. And I think, again, councillor Hobson referred to the housing crisis. There is a crisis of supply of housing, and there's a crisis of affordability. Under the Tories, affordable housing is at a significant long-time low, and I would argue we need a change of government in order that we can build homes to replace those that have been sold off under right-to-buy, Lord Mayor. I think that legislation does seriously need a review as our motion sets out. Lord Mayor, for many of us in this council chamber, I'm sure we will have spent some of our lives living in council housing, an affordable and very good quality home. For me, it's one of my earliest memories when we moved into our brand-new council place, affordable, good quality home, a place with a bathroom, actually, when my family moved out of their Tyneside flat. I'm proud of what Your Homes Newcastle do in supporting tenants. We work to make sure that Your Homes Newcastle is the first choice for housing, and working with the council to build houses. We're working together to build supported housing that offers better outcomes for residents, a better quality of life, better wellbeing. And of course, we've also invested significant amounts of capital to make sure that the housing stock is of a good quality, to meet the decent homes standard. Lord Mayor, we recently, as board members, visited some of the upgraded schemes for older people in the city. And I do urge colleagues, if they've got some of those developments in their wards, to go and visit them. They're really excellent, they're hotel-quality standard, and I think we would want that for all our residents, we would want that high standard for everyone. Lord Mayor, we earlier heard about concerns in the tower blocks, and the board of YHN and the council together have worked really hard to ensure that health and safety is a really high priority, that our tower blocks are safe from fire. Lord Mayor, the purpose of bringing this motion to council tonight was to celebrate a hundred years since the Addison Act, a hundred years of council housing in this city. And like councillor Hobson, I would encourage you to go to the library and have a look at the exhibition. We're working to ensure we celebrate the next hundred years, and we will find a way together to build more general housing too. Lord Mayor, our second motion.
Thank you councillor Huddart, to be followed by councillor Higgins.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you councillor Hobson for bringing this motion forward. We do support the principles of this motion, and we are wholehearted supporters of the development of social housing in the UK and this city. And I endorse everything she said about the scandal of lack of housing, children without homes, et cetera, people living in porter cabins, et cetera. And what I wanted to say was, a hundred years ago, unless you had a very good income and you could afford to buy property, finding a decent place to live was beyond the means of millions of low-paid workers. Housing for poor people was either privately rented, or it came as part of wages, tied accommodation, for instance railway staff, or miners' cottages, or agricultural workers. And if they got put out of the job, they got put out of the house. And it was invariably of a poor standard. Sanitation was poor, few properties had mains drainage, people relied still on wells for water, and only the rich could have indoor taps or electricity. Tenant's rights were non-existent, and one only has to look at newspaper adverts from that time to see the limited choice that was available. In the street where my grandmother lived, even in the sixties, only half the houses had indoor cold-water taps. On her side, on the other side, they were in the yard. And they relied on gas lamps. And they relied on gas lamps. Yet they had managed and survived there for many years. It was a far sighted approach in 1919 by the then Liberal minister, Dr Addison. And it was of its time when the recognition of the need for better living accommodation, sanitation, better food, school meals, pensions, et cetera, was forming the basis of a swathe of political actions. And World War One changed a lot of attitudes. And the government realised that people needed and deserved more. And we had that slogan about homes for heroes. So the opportunity to live in a decent house at an affordable rent was highly regarded by many residents. However, many local authorities set to and it's been interesting to see how they've celebrated the 100 years of building in many places. Our main constraints currently are the lack of political will along with the finance to underwrite land purchase and building costs. And shortages are still pushing residents into the private rented sector. The principle of right to buy was popular at the time and it wasn't opposed by many political groups. However, as things have moved on, the problem has become the lack of funds for rebuilding on a one-to-one basis. And many authorities are now looking at ways to restrict this right. Had local authorities and housing associations received better funding in order to build more properties via shared equity arrangements, then this would have also provided encouragement to help more people onto the housing ladder. Without more social housing, many of our young people will be condemned to become generation rent in the private sector in the future. And this won't help anyone. We do support the motion and we are very supportive of the sterling work undertaken by the staff of our Almo at YHN. And we wish them all success for the next 100 years. Thank you.
councillor Higgins, to be followed by councillor Ashby.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think before speaking on this motion, I have to declare an interest as a board member for Your Homes Newcastle. Sorry? Oh, right. You've got something in common then, Dory.
Councillor Hoddart has declared an interest. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, in speaking in support of this motion, can I first of all join councillor Hobson in congratulating all who have contributed to the wonderful exhibitions in both the Central Library and elsewhere, which provides such a rich history of council housing. And I would strongly encourage all colleagues to pay a visit. However, I would like to take up this opportunity to thank not only the staff at Your Homes Newcastle and their partners who helped to set up this exhibition, but also the achievements and resilience of council tenants themselves and in particular those in my own ward of Benwell in Scottswood. As colleagues will be aware, the council estate in Scottswood has gone through many phases since the homes were built for families of manual workers at the Armstrong Works and in many other traditional Tyneside industries located along the river and in the west end of Newcastle during the period of the Industrial Revolution. However, the 60s and 70s were a time of particularly rapid decline with mounting unemployment and social problems in the area culminating in the inner-city disturbances of the Thatcher years and the securing of City Challenge funding, which itself was such a testament to the energy and resourcefulness of local Scottswood people. Indeed, it is perhaps surprising to some that Michael Hesseltine, the City Challenge Minister at the time, is still spoken of with considerable affection by many people in Scottswood. However, as so often is the case, it is out of this adversity that a real sense of community began to develop, which in my experience is a feature of so many council estates where families face multiple challenges in their everyday lives. Through the Scottswood Neighbourhood Centre, the first ever credit union was formed, run by local people in Scottswood, mainly council tenants, which brought so many benefits to hard-pressed families, including first-ever holidays for many children on the estate. With funding from City Challenge, the Scottswood area strategy was set up as a model of tenant engagement in managing their own community. And the Estate Housing Management Committee, instigated by local people, was a beacon of partnership excellence between council tenants, the Tenants' Federation and local councillors in managing the Scottswood estate. Along the road in Benwell, we have Pendour Estate, one of the first ever council estates, and the so-called Homes for Heroes, built in 1919 for those returning from the Great War. Pendour Estate is, of course, also celebrating its centenary with a series of wonderful events organised through the Good Neighbor Project that does so much work with residents of all ages and by its very name epitomises the spirit of that community. Through my own involvement, I have met families who have lived on the estate for successive generations. And despite some of the hardships that they face, they would not wish to live anywhere else. Moreover, the award-winning Pendour Tenants and Residents Association continues to be such an effective and outstanding voice on behalf of the people of that community. We have seen recent new social housing built in both Benwell and Scottswood, particularly in relation to new high-quality bungalows, so vital in allowing older people to remain living near to their families and to continue to receive support from them. This is an encouraging sign. However, I would endorse the view expressed by councillor Hobson that the government should provide support to build more council homes in the city and urgently review the right to buy legislation of the Thatcher years that has been so damaging and led to the loss of so much quality social housing that has gone to the private rented sector. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Wood.
I'd like to remove the Standing Order 19. It'll be amended to allow conclusion of the business on the agenda, otherwise in 10 minutes.
Is that agreed? Is it agreed?
Agreed.
I don't hear any conclusion there, so again, we'll have to take a vote on that matter. You can get your mobiles ready. So the vote is to suspend Standing Order 19. Continue after the guillotine. Well, that isn't going to be carried. So if that motion is defeated, so councillor Ashby, can you continue, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's a great pleasure to be able to mark the centenary of the Liberals' Housing Act of 1919, named as councillor Hoddart reminds us after Liberal Health Minister, Dr Charles Addison. And to remind ourselves also, during this turbulent week in Parliament, that it was a 19th century liberal philosophy to create a European order based on cooperation rather than conflict, on mutual trust instead of rivalry and suspicion. The rule of law was to supplant the reign of false and self-interest. A friend of mine once wrote, 'He who forgets history is doomed.' I'd also remind council that it was the Liberals who laid the foundation of our welfare state, including universal education, health insurance, health and safety at work, unemployment benefits and old age pensions. We are as strongly invested in these concepts as the most radical inside or outside this council chamber. As Liberal Democrats, we're concerned more about the provision of housing rather than just who provides it. We do not believe that only councils can do the job. Indeed, we are very aware of the old saw that all power corrupts and that if politicians control the roof over your head, they exercise undue influence on votes. Here in Newcastle, we have a substantial amount of housing provided by YHN, thanks to its staff being something I warmly endorse. They're private rented housing providers, who are often described universally and wrongly as rogue landlords. We have the innovative work being done by TyneX, a joint venture between the council and a private developer on whose board I am one of your representatives. Northbourne Street in Elswick was Victorian terraced housing, much standing empty and dilapidated with consequent ASB. The city council worked with TyneX and the Home Group, the Social Housing Association, to clear the site and then create 86 modern, affordable rented homes while keeping a traditional layout but with gardens for personal space and a sense of community. The Lodeman Street development nearby plans 172 units. It's being pursued by the council, getting a substantial grant from Homes England for site remediation. TyneX will then be the developer with a range of options for building homes next year. The city council also participates in TyneX profits, which are used for community grants. It's a mechanism for housing provision which has impressed me and I'm sure has further scope. I commend such new approaches to council.
Thank you councillor Schofield, to be followed by councillor Hall.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to councillor Hobson for bringing this very important motion to council this evening, which I hope will have cross-party support. It's really important that we celebrate the centenary of council houses, in particular the proud, long-track record of achievements which we've heard about tonight in public housing in Newcastle that's being celebrated across the city. And that we also stress that the provision of genuinely affordable housing matters to our city in these very difficult times. As someone who benefited from the Homes for Heroes scheme, because my father had been in the war and was killed in the war, otherwise we would have been homeless, I would also like to publicly mark the Labour Party's proud historic role in the provision of decent, affordable housing. The 1945 Labour government, as part of its programme to establish a welfare state, invested not just in building a massive number of houses for working-class people, slum clearance and town planning, but under the direction of an hour in Bevan, in the provision of council houses that were of a very high standard, once the preserve of the rich. It provided spacious homes with inside toilets and baths and gardens that were a source of pride and security to people and gave children a very good start in their life. The Labour governments of the 1960s and through to the early 2000s also set out bold building programmes to halt the decline in the quality seen under the Tories. But whatever measure you use, the history of the Tory housing policy is one of shoddy, shameful jambles. They've always been at best indifferent and at worst hostile to the provision of genuinely affordable, decent council housing. But of course, many of the roots of our current council crisis, which councillor Hobson showed very clearly under the Tories, lies in Margaret Thatcher's rapid withdrawal in the 1980s of funding for new affordable housing as part of the largest privatisation of public assets in modern history. She also introduced a right to buy your council house scheme and within that scheme cynically, using populist, right-wing arguments, convinced many council house tenants that buying their home would help them escape the stereotypes of effectiveness, she said, were attached to tenants. Well, some tenants did benefit, but it resulted in 1.3 million homes being sold and lost to the public centre. And those tenants who couldn't afford to take up the offer or find other homes were made, according to Thatcherite ideology, failures and scroungers. We are all aware this language is still being used today by Tories in all their social insurance and housing schemes, especially for vulnerable groups, people with disabilities, young people, refugees and asylum seekers. They also continue to attack working-class people and local authority public housing provision. Since 2010, homelessness has spiralled and is up by 50% and rough sleeping has doubled. 120,000 children are homeless or living in homes unfit for human habitation. In 2013, the Tories, all very rich and many owning several warehouses, sunk to their lowest with the introduction of the vicious bedroom tax. In 2016, they took away tenant security by banning local authority provision of long-term tenancies.
Can I ask you to wind up, please?
Okay, well, but nothing captures the Tory housing failure more than the horror of the fire at Grenfell Tower. The image of people burning in their homes in the richest borough of the UK for the simple reason that they were too poor and powerless will haunt a generation. The only way to address our housing system that is now broken in many parts vicious and in crisis is to deliver more social housing based on the principle of fairness, justice, that a decent home is a right owed to all and not the privilege of the few.
Councillor Hall, to be forwarded finally by councillor Ken. Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I'd like to thank councillor Hobson for bringing this motion, in particular highlighting the excellent work of YHN staff. The Addison Act led to the building of nearly 2 million council homes under provisions of this act and the ones that followed it in the interwar years and then countless others since then. It seems particularly timely, considering the cross-party alliances in Parliament, which has just led to the No Deal Bill passing the House of Commons, that the minister associated with this act was in his time both a Liberal and a Labour MP and Cabinet Minister. Council housing provides an invaluable backstop. It helps lift people up and support them when they would otherwise be unable to afford a home and could end up in destitution. And it's right that we celebrate council housing, but I would ask the question, is council housing in and of itself an end point? To have a healthy housing market, we need a mix of provision, including private sale, private rent, as well as council housing. And it's right to point out that having a home is a basic entitlement, but also owning a home should be within the grasp of everyone. Unfortunately, we are in a situation where this is not possible due to high house prices, a large private rental market and undeveloped land, both in this city and across the country. But focusing particularly on the city, we have designated housing sites which are sitting undeveloped. For example, the Arena Site and the Newburn Housing Site that's designated for housing. And the council should really be looking at new and innovative ways to directly tackle the housing crisis as it comes up in this city. There's various ways that could be looked at. Stronger regulations on the private rental sector, using the planning system to encourage developers to free up land to develop those brown and field sites, rather than being content to allow developers to choose to pave over various sections of Newcastle's natural environment. Or to build on the TyneX partnership as a council-owned housing developer actively targeting these brownfield sites for development. To conclude, I do support the motion and we do support the motion in celebrating council houses, but we need to look at what we can do to improve the provision of all kinds of homes to solve the housing crisis. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Ken.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I welcome this motion. Particularly, it's very personal, as it probably is to many people in this chamber. I, like many, have no doubt have fond memories of early life in a council house. For me, the introduction to the Addison Act of 1919 should be seen in the same vein of the Beveridge Report of 1942. Government subsidies to help finance the construction of 500,000 homes in three years was a hugely ambitious act. And despite it not achieving the targets due to a weakening economy, the building blocks for council housing was established. These were not to be terraced houses packed into streets on narrow plots, but low-density garden suburbs where generously proportioned houses were set out in large gardens. We are blessed in Newcastle to have just this, such a variety of designs, well-proportioned homes and gardens. The establishment of this gave the principle of state-subsidized social housing for the next 60 years and more, as well as wider themes in social council housing policy and design. We have so many excellent council estates across this city. I am extremely proud to represent the Ward of Biker and I'm proud that this truly groundbreaking social housing estate is ranked in The Guardian's 10 best council estates. I truly believe that these homes were the building blocks of modern Britain. They created the social fabric and cohesion of communities across the country. The introduction of the Right to Buy scheme by a vicious and pernicious Tory government in 1980, with subsequent sales of about one and a half million homes purchased through this scheme, the crime being the funds not being ring-fenced to be allocated to build more social housing to replace them. We meet today celebrating 100 years since this act with much to be proud of in Newcastle, both through our strategic housing team and YHN. They have shown innovation and continue to deliver high-quality homes and services to our tenants. I'm surprised, therefore, at the comments made by the previous speaker in raising questions which I believe YHN, this city council and strategic housing... which I believe YHN, this city council and the strategic housing team actually deliver innovation, they bring enterprise, they bring about a different approach, they've addressed the issues about regulatory issues around the private rented market. So actually, I think I would suggest looking at the council policy rather than making some rhetoric which is unfounded and untrue. We have done all of this activity very positive, which has been acknowledged by many colleagues across the chamber. In spite of the current Tory government once more hell-bent on the destruction of the state, draconian cuts on local government budgets, yet producing reports highlighting the needs of mass house-building programmes. After decades of housing policy being dominated by the advocates of private enterprise, even the Conservatives in the person of the recent Prime Minister Theresa May have admitting that the housing market is broken and the government lifted the cap on local authority borrowing for housing. For the first time in decades, talk of a major programme of council housing needs no longer to be fanciful, but government needs to step up and commit to a funding new programme of council housing here in this city.
Thank you. I call on councillor Hobson to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd just like to thank everybody for their contributions tonight, and thank you to the whole chamber to come together and be proud of our council housing history and positive about the future of our council housing. And I'm pleased to see that councillor Hoddart and councillor Ashby support the motion particularly. It wasn't that long ago when I was sat in a cabinet meeting with the then leader of the Lib Dem group, who was very supportive of the proposals to have a two-year limit to council house tenures. So I'm pleased that they've come around to our way of thinking that a secure tenancy is the best tenancy that we can offer our council tenants. And I'd just like to say to councillor Higgins that when we had the centenary launch event, we had the film show from the Benwell Knitters, which is absolutely fantastic, and I would recommend anybody going along to see that. And I am proud, as councillor Kemp mentioned also, I'm proud to represent Cowgate Council Estate. It's the council estate where I grew up, and I'm now the councillor in that area, and it makes me immensely proud to do that. And also, within Blakelaw Ward, we have the 165 Estate, where the massive amount of investment in that council estate has absolutely transformed that area. And it just shows what you can do when you have the political will to do so, and that's what this motion is saying. We have the political will to get on and build decent homes for the people of Newcastle, let us do it.
Does the council agree the motion? Agreed. Right. I was going to use my discretion on the position of the big hand on that clock in front of me, but it has actually ticked round rather more than I can stretch that. So I do have to declare that the guillotine has fallen. So I will ask councillor Dunn if she wishes to defer motion number 11, or to take the vote now. Certainly. Right. Is there a seconder for that? Seconder councillor Avery, is it agreed then? Cuts to school budgets motion agreed. Agreed? Agreed, thank you. If I can then move on and ask councillor Fulcher whether he wishes to go through that procedure or defer the motion. Councillor Fulcher is deferring the motion till next time, and councillor Kane, your motion on sustainable development goals. Councillor Kane wishes this to go to the vote now without debate. Is anyone seconding that? Councillor Hoddart, so is that motion agreed? Sorry, I beg your pardon, I've missed out, there is an amendment. I call on councillor Forbes to move the amendment. And a seconder for that, councillor Carter is seconding the amendment. Can we take the vote, therefore, on the amendment? No? So we'll have to take a mobile vote on that, please. So the amendment is agreed, it becomes the substantive motion, so is the substantive motion as amended, agreed? Agreed. Thank you very much, colleagues. The next meeting will be on Wednesday the 2nd of October. In the meantime, we have a very exciting sporting weekend coming up. We've got the Rugby International Friday night, the Junior Great North Run and the Great North Run Saturday and Sunday, and the Tour of Britain cycle race is in the city on Monday. So get involved if you can. See you next Wednesday. Thank you, colleagues. Next month, Wednesday the 2nd of October. Thank you, colleagues.